You don't email.
I like to.
It's not that far from my office.
Good evening and welcome to City Council Study Session Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. One item on the agenda. Item number one, discussion regarding fiscal year ending 2024 capital improvements program budget.
Thank you, Mayor. I am Kim Kaufman, the Budget Manager, and this is Jacob Huckabee, the Capital Projects Budget Technician, and we're going to discuss next fiscal year, fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, the capital improvement program budget, and then the capital improvements plan for fiscal years 25 through 28. This is the third study session on the capital project budget for next fiscal year. Recall, on November 15th, we discussed an update on funded projects and discussed your priorities for fiscal year ending 24, and then in February, we discussed proposed new projects and midpoint evaluations. Tonight, we're going to discuss our final proposed plan for fiscal year ending 2024. These are all of the funds that are in our special purpose capital project, or these are all of the special purpose capital project funds. These have CIP budgets, Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, CDBG Fund, Special Grants Fund, Room Tax Fund, Public Transportation and Parking Fund. The capital fund is split between pay-as-you-go and general obligation funds. Norman Ford Sales Tax Fund, Park Land and Development Fund, University North Park Tax Increment Finance District Fund, Center City Tax Increment Finance District Fund, Arterial Road Recruitment Fund. And then over with the enterprise funds, we have the Water Fund, Water Reclamation Fund, Sanitation Fund, Sewer Maintenance Fund, and New Development Excise Tax Fund. These are the guidelines that we follow when we allocate new capital sales tax revenue. Thirty-six percent goes to other projects in debt, 27% goes to capital outlay, 25% goes to street maintenance, and then new for fiscal year ending 2024, we kind of swapped the allocations for maintenance of existing facilities and our general contingency. We did, we used to allocate 5% of capital sales tax revenue to maintenance of existing facilities and 7% to general contingency. We flipped those because our facilities have been expanding at a rapid rate, and we need a little bit more money to work with to maintain those facilities.
Kim, has that kept up by changing it to 7%? That additional 2%? Has that kept up with the budget for maintenance?
We could always use more.
Right, I think we're finally at the point where we need additional funds to maintain the additional facilities in the square footage, so. But historically, I think we've been okay.
This doesn't take into account the May 9th vote on the guest room tax.
It does not.
But if it did pass, then there would be some money for some of the facilities.
And that is correct. That's an amendment that we're discussing should that election pass.
It's a possibility for funding. It would be set aside in the Sports Commission's budget. I'm not sure Catherine might be able to answer this, but there's going to be a certain percentage that they would use for Norman Ford facility upgrades. But that's basically flipping, and that's sports facilities, not all the facilities. That's just flipping one percentage to another percentage. And, you know, for those who don't know, in the past probably five years, we've gained almost a half million square feet of facility space. So it's, we're way behind where we should be on facility maintenance. And we have a lot of older, older infrastructure, older buildings that need some love in addition to newer buildings that are coming online.
So we're going to get into some of the fund detail at this point. These are the funds that have no new capital improvement program budgets or projects for fiscal year ending 24. These funds do still have active capital projects, but they're from prior or current fiscal year. So arterial road recruitment doesn't have any active capital projects at this time. But these are the funds that have no new funding for fiscal year ending 24. Onto the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. Public Safety Sales Tax Fund has some allocations for the critical capital needs as estimated in 2015. For fiscal year 24, the police, the fire chief did request a $2.1 million aerial ladder platform. However, out of the $6.8 million allocation for the apparatus replacement program, there's only about $1.1 million left. So that request was denied for the proposed budget. The Public Safety Oversight Committee, I believe everyone received a letter from them recommending that we look at some other options to fund that request for fiscal year 24. We'll have some options, some funding mechanisms for the Finance Committee meeting on the 18th to discuss some potential amendments, should the council choose to do that. This is the apparatus replacement schedule to date. We've replaced about nine different units over eight fiscal years since the program began in 2015. And again, down here on the bottom is the request. It was not funded. But I think we've spent to date about 5... 5.6 million dollars on apparatus replacements. About $5.7 million on apparatus replacements to this point. In the CDBG Fund, we have two new capital projects for fiscal year ending 24. FYE 24 Habitat Acquisition for $40,000 and FYE 24 NHA Land Acquisition. These are both land acquisition programs for affordable housing projects. In the Room Tax Fund, again, this is not factoring in the election for the room tax increase, but there are two capital projects scheduled for 24 fiscal year ending 24. Westwood Tennis Center improvements at $150,000 and the Westwood Park Master Plan at $25,000. And I'll hand it over to Jacob for the capital fund and the rest of the funds.
All right, thank you. So first to the, on the capital fund, the status of the capital fund, looking at how much paid our funding we have available for these new projects. So in fiscal year ending 2024, we have a negative currently in that line item at negative 3 million. But looking ahead to FYE 25 and 26, we're looking to get back into that positive. So hopefully we can start adding in some new projects in those out years as we look forward. So this is a list of the proposed recurring sidewalk projects in FYE 24. And first one is the sidewalk program for schools and arterials, targeting areas with heavy pedestrian traffic and inadequate paths around those schools and arterials. The Sidewalk Accessibility Project adds things like wheelchair ramps and curb cuts to help these areas meet ADA guidelines. The Citywide Sidewalk Project, which is a part of that 50-50 matching program where they repair hazardous and hazardous and deteriorated sidewalks. The Downtown Area Sidewalk Project is a downtown focus where these spots are determined by staff's scoring models and input from the residents in that area. The Sidewalks and Trails Projects, where again, these are determined from staff's weighted scoring model. And the aim of this is to help complement some of those various adopted plans that the city follows. And then finally, we have the Horizontal Sawcut Program, where we use the horizontal sawcut technology to make minor repairs to help certain areas get through ADA compliance. And in total, these are $420,000. So next, we have some more of the proposed recurring projects in FYE 24. We have that 27% allocation for capital outlay. We have street maintenance, which is going to be the alley repair, asphalt pavement maintenance, concrete pavement maintenance, and the crack seal programs. We have the maintenance of existing facilities we discussed earlier. That got changed from 5% to 7%. The stormwater drainage maintenance projects, the personnel costs, the ODOT audit adjustments, bridge maintenance, driveway repairs, street striping, traffic calming, and the community and neighborhood improvements. This is the infrastructure project that is located in those CDBG target areas. And all in all, these are just over $12.9 million. And also at the bottom there, there's a bullet for the ADA compliance and compliance program. This was not included. There is no submission for FYE 24, but staff recommends that we include this as an amendment for $300,000. It's been a recurring project for the past five years, and it helps the city maintain the 2018 ADA Transition Plan.
The ODOT Audit Adjustments. What does that $100,000 go to?
Pretty common, Mayor and Council, that we'll get a bill for an old ODOT completed project for seven years after the project is completed. I think the robust history passed eight years after we finished fiscal year 24. So we, Council decided to create this account to be ready for that next. We never know. Again, we get a lot of ODOT grants, and we're happy about that. But a lot of times, when they reconcile audit accounts, we've got a few dollars still due.
No statute limitations on this?
So some more notes in the capital fund. There's a monument signs project for $175,000. This project's just going to help begin identifying some locations for some of these monument signs. There's the Reed Avenue Curb and Gutter Project. It was an amendment that's been discussed for $145,000. It's going to be improvements along the west side of Reeve Avenue, between Main Street and Eufaula Street, evaluating the surface drainage needs, roadway width, and the feasibility of a modified curb section. This was brought to the Finance Committee to discuss. They looked at possibly using some asphalt and concrete pavement maintenance funding diverted from that program in FYE 24. But it seemed that the Finance Committee wanted to look at using alternate funding, possibly from the General Fund to fund just the design of that project this year. So that's one thing that will be discussed. And then also the RTA's request, that was increased from $182,000 to $348,000 in FYE 24.
So the Monument Signs Project, that is something that's different than the historical signs that we've been allocating money for the last two, I think, budget cycles. So can you talk a little bit more about what this is?
So I can probably address that best. As part of our SEC readiness efforts in visiting some of our neighboring agencies, one thing we did recognize is as you're driving into some of those communities, there is no doubt where you are. You can see it on every major freeway entrance in to some of those SEC communities. And we took a hard look at what you see and how you know you're in Norman. And there's a little green sign that says, Norman, next seven exits, but nothing that says, welcome to Norman, you know, home of the University of Oklahoma, kind of a thing. So we don't, we don't know what they look like yet. The thought was north and south bound I-35 and east and west bound Highway 9 to be able to let the world know you've made it to Norman, Oklahoma.
There is a sign on 35. It says like, city of festivals and city of whatever. Like, maybe it's not as prominent as what you're thinking of, but there is a sign that says like, welcome to Norman. It's a green sign. I don't know exactly where it is, but I know it has a couple of like things. I'm pretty sure it's a city of festivals and, yeah. But maybe not as like grand as kind of what you're expecting. So would it be similar to, so we have like the sign that says Norman on Main Street. We have one on, I think, 77, Lassen.
Yep, and Lit, and, yeah.
Have we talked to our SEC school about ponying up since they're the ones taking us there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Their participation and even, you know, recognition on that monument sign.
Okay. Just making sure.
And they don't really have a whole lot of contact with the folks at ODOT. And, you know, right away is one of those things, and we've got, we've got some right away, you know, figuring out where they go and who owns what. And, yeah, a lot of work to start, but this is just, yeah, step one.
They got a lot of money too.
To get there, yeah, more than most.
Okay.
I'll just add an editorial to that. I think this would be really positive because if you think about the OKC letters that are in downtown Oklahoma City next to the Ferris wheel, that's what you see in every picture that's taken nowadays. So if we get something to that kind of level, I think it'll be real positive.
With a Ferris wheel or without?
If you can make a Ferris wheel happen, I'm on board.
Thank you, Kim.
And so on to the Norman Ford Fund. So similar to last year, you'll see an item, we're going to be de-appropriating some funds in the current fiscal year and then re-appropriating those funds in these three projects back in the budget in FYE 24. We have a lot of large project encumbrances with the Young Family Athletic Center and the Adult Wellness Center. And so in order to make sure that when we finalize the budget, we have a positive ending fund balance, this is just an action that's going to be taken to make sure that's all set, whenever that's printed. And then in the Park Land and Development Fund, there's one new project, the Reeves Park Maintenance Building. Phase one of the Reeves Park Master Plan is complete. And so as part of the future Reeves Park Master Plan phases, this building is included. And so with the increase in the use of the baseball and softball fields, this building should help make the maintenance of these areas more efficient and help keep up with the needs that are increasing on those fields.
Is that the same building that we were talking about moving those one people? Who was that group, Matt?
Oh, I'm sorry. Engage Learning.
Engage Learning. Is that the same building that we're talking about here? No, different one?
This would be a separate building.
Separate, okay.
And finally, just a list of some upcoming challenges to keep in mind as we move forward through this budget year and the next. We have the I-35 corridor study, the possible impacts of the Access Oklahoma Turnpike Plan, of public transportation, as we discussed, the Regional Transit Authority, the new traffic signals on state highways and city arterials, the city's fleet replacement, the fleet facility renovation, the IT infrastructure and Microsoft system upgrades, the bridge replacements and major maintenance, stormwater infrastructure, the upgrades and repairs needed at the fleet fueling facility, sidewalk gaps, escalating construction costs, the multiple master plan updates, the traffic management center and the staffing, the possible redevelopment of the land with the Griffin Hospital currently is, the possibility of a TIF district in that area, OU going to the SEC, the possibility of a new UNP arena, a possibility of a TIF district in that area again, and the OU Airport expansion, the future remodel and replacement of Building B, with the scope pending, that public safety study that's going to be happening soon, and the oversized emergency vehicle storage facility at the ECOC.
Why does the OU Airport expansion affect us, or how does the OU affect?
It is possible that we may have to do some land acquisition or some sort of agreement that we would not exceed FAA regulations in the Westwood area. This, you know, it's just driving an issue to be okayed.
Thank you, sir.
And that's all we have for today.
Are there any other questions on anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just have a few here. The ladder truck is the last vehicle in the PSST project list that we need to purchase?
That's, that's a good question. The project sheet submitted by the fire chief actually has requests through fiscal year ending 33.
I guess I should clarify the voter-approved project list.
The ordinance that was in the election, it just stated that an amount of funds would be set aside for fire apparatus replacement program. It did not specify a dollar amount. When they put the estimates together for the critical capital needs in 2015, they estimated $6.8 million, and that's kind of what we've stuck to. It doesn't mean it can't be amended by either the city manager or council because keep in mind that the original ECOC budget that was set in that same estimate was like $6.5 million. So it can be changed. We just haven't received that direction so far.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were fulfilling what voters' expectations were. And then if the General Fund were to help pay for this ladder truck, can the General Fund be paid back by the PSST at a later date?
Well, as soon as all of the critical capital needs are taken care of, all of the PSST revenues and expenditures are going to be absorbed by the General Fund anyway. So I don't, I don't, I mean, we could, you know, transfer funds back in there, but it's, we've usually had it subsidized by the General Fund to the PSST fund.
So you can't combine them though until, like, Fire Station 5 is finished?
That's correct.
Dispatchers are hired and SRO situation is figured out and?
That's correct.
This truck is?
It's the capital.
The recommendation is just triggered by the critical capital needs.
Okay, so just Fire Station 5?
And Councilmember Holman, in our conversation about the lead time on fire apparatus these days, we know it takes over a year to get a, just regular old fleet vehicle. It's about two years from the time you sign the contract, actually, if fire apparatus delivered. So you'd have a couple of budget cycles to be able to establish the funding available for that big fire truck, the big ladder.
And as the Oversight Committee recommends, if we were to do a bond for it, how would that work? Would it be a revenue bond based off PSST fund, or?
It may not even be, when you think about the cost of issuing debt versus the purchase price of a million eight, million nine, somewhere in that range. Yeah, we might want to figure out a way to pay cash for it and not incur, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in the cost of issuance for a $2 million note.
I wasn't sure if their recommendation was for a voter-approved general obligation bond for that, but the outstanding debt that we already have for the EMM Communication Center and the $1 million fire truck that we did originally, and the communication system is still outstanding. So we really couldn't issue any more PSST back to debt until that's paid off.
2027 is the final payment.
So cash or a GO bond if we were to do that? Okay. The RTA needing an increase, is that, that's the result of the other cities being out and us needing to pony up more?
And probably a little bit to do with the project ramping up more engineering work going into the process.
It is a complex vote, Councilmember. The loss of the other three cities obviously ramped up our share for the remaining three cities. And then it is definitely ramping up heavy activity, or anticipate heavy activity this year approaching the sales tax election in fall of '24. That's the current projection.
Okay. And, but out of that, we got to add another person to the board and everything like that.
Right. So we have two board members, Pennman has two, and Oklahoma City has two. But it's evened out. The original board makeup and number is the same as it was at the city.
Right, right, right. Okay. And then that Reeves Park building, that's kind of where we have all the stuff stored in that corner that's outside, that kind of, a place for all that to go, is that kind of where?
Call it kind of a rock yard down on the southeast corner of Reeves Park. That was the ideal place to build a new maintenance building. And that would also take down, include taking down, there's a maintenance building on the northwest corner that's very old and crumbling, and that's where they store a bunch of equipment now. That would also include the demo of that.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a couple more questions about the ladder truck. Is this a replacement or a new addition to our current apparatus?
That's a good question, Councilwoman. It would be a new apparatus. So the current, where this would go is our fire station number one. We currently have a 75-foot ladder in service right there. This plane was instituted a couple of budget cycles ago. To make a long story short, we're taking out a 50-foot ladder. We bought two engines, two simple pumpers, which saved a lot of money as what we were going to spend. But when we instituted this, it was contingent upon getting this 100-footer this coming budget cycle. That would go in service at Fire Station 1, and then the 75-footer in service there today, would go in reserve status, where it would service the rest of the ladders in town. Currently, we don't have a reserved ladder. So when ladder 2 goes out of service, or the Quinn at Station 8, or a ladder at Station 4 on the west side of town, we put a pumper in there. Or we do musical trucks to try to get a ladder out there. So by having a reserve, we can capture ISO credit, and we can be more operationally sound when these apparatus go in for service or if they break down. So it'd be a new apparatus.
Okay. And then can you explain why it's so important for us to have a 100-foot ladder? I've heard some things about, you know, the 75-foot ladder is not adequate to get to our tallest buildings. And can you, can you explain why this is really important in, I guess, for our ISO rating as well?
So currently, we have a 100-foot platform in service at Fire Station 2. We put a second ladder company in service several years ago. You'll see back on that list, we ordered two pumper tankers several fiscal cycles ago that went at our eastern stations. We recycled those apparatus, brought them in town, and it enabled us to take a 75-foot ladder, which was operating as an engine company. And I'm sorry for the inside baseball talk, but we were able to open a dedicated ladder service. It just responds to structure fires. It can respond to medical calls, but it's dedicated for fire response. That, along with automatic aid agreements and many other things, and the extra water we put out east, is what got us our, the best ISO rating in the state. We want to try to preserve that. As to 100-foot, well, you know, you, you want to think, man, we want to reach the highest buildings in town. We can't do that with a 100-footer. In, in the business, 100-foot is generally the, they make bigger ones, but that's really the largest one that we could manage here. And by getting that, you max out that credit from an ISO perspective. But from an operational perspective, even though we can't reach SARKE centers, it's 15 stories, or the towers that are 12 stories, or the hospital with the middle tower, 12 stories, we can certainly get up and, and protect exposures. If a building like that was on fire, we would get people inside to a place where we could reach them. But a ladder like this also gives you so much more operational advantage. If you have a train derailment, let's say, you see that a lot in the country right now, we could potentially prevent a bloody situation. You know, you could have an explosion that could take out a mile radius in an event like that. Well, you can get these big ladders and park them on the road. Certainly, we could do that along flood in certain areas in town when those trains go through. Extend it all the way out, and you can, you can help make a situation better. You start talking high angle, low angle rescue. You can extend these things out, do a lot of good there. Hazmat situation, you can extend these out. They've got nozzles on the bottom of those platforms where you can do mass deconning. You think about OU, 100,000 people around. You have a situation where you're trying to get product off of people or trying to save lives. These big ladders make a big difference. They're a lot safer for us to work off of as well. You get a platform up there, we can lock in. These big ladders have 2,000 GPM pumps with massive horsepower. Our platform that we have in service, the 100-footer, has already paid for itself. Way, I mean, we've had big fires west in, you know, Brookhaven Square, for instance. You still have a lot of wood roofs out there. I mean, you get big fires going, and it'll pay for itself in one night. So having two in service, they run to all structured fires in town. They're very key, like I said, in hazmat situations and rescue situations. So highly advised, give them.
And just to brag on this guy, if we went with our old vendor, 100-foot ladder truck doesn't fit in the building?
That was going to be my next question. This is what I heard.
So in the homework assignment, how do we do this without them to build another brand-new fire station? The concept of mid-mounted aerial apparatus, they discovered and thought, it'll fit. So that goes a long way in saving the program overall dollars, not having to come up with a new place to park it.
Couple of years ago, when I talked about instituting this plan, which included this year getting this big one, we changed apparatus manufacturers. So we were with Pierce. And what I've always liked is kind of the Southwest Airlines model of doing things. You try to get one vendor, they're all in the HGHC program, so it's legally, we can do it. It's their bottom dollar that they all put on this. So we, we kind of married up with Pierce some time ago. Our mechanics got used to that. We stockpiled parts, turnaround time out of the shop was better. Our firefighters know the apparatus better, how to work the pumps. When you're switching to another station and coming in overtime, you don't have to relearn everything. They got expensive though, and during COVID, they really got expensive. So we had already been researching Sutton. They're the industry leader on the mid-mount platform that would fit in our Fire Station 1, which was built quite some time ago. These new big ones won't fit in there. So unless you want to give me $5 million to build a new station, we'll get it. We'll get a rear mount. But the mid-mount works, and it works fine. We were impressed with them. So when we started getting pricing back from Pierce, and I knew that that wasn't, we just had to do better than that, we went ahead and looked at an engine from Sutton, and we were impressed. They're made in Ohio. They're still family-owned. They're not publicly traded. They try to source parts in America. So what we were dealing with with Pierce was parts coming from overseas. They're sitting in the Pacific Ocean, and we're stuck without a fire truck. They got to be kind of like a BMW, so they engineered a lot of their own parts. They engineered their front ends. Well, Sutton, they... Well, Sutton, they, they use Hendrickson front end, for example, our mechanics are used to working on those, because they're the same thing on dump trucks or, or trash trucks. They source with NAPA, we've got a NAPA shop in our fleet facility. So it makes a lot of sense. They build a simpler fire truck, we're all about keeping it as simple as we can, so that's why we decided to switch. Price is competitive, they're expensive across the board, but we like what we're seeing so far, and we're comfortable with making the switch. So that's how we got with them, and why this program kicked it off like we did.
Yeah, thank you for the kind of expanded explanation.
Yeah, I give a little detail, I'm trying to.
No, no, it's really, it's really helpful to understand, because we were hearing some different things from some of our PTS, P, SST Oversight Committee members, and I was like, this, I'm a little confused, so I'm glad that, like, you're here to tell us exactly why, that we already have a 100-foot ladder, but this is to put something in reserve, right, and kind of allows us to, to be more nimble and maneuver. So I appreciate the context.
Chief, were you saying the new manufacturer is S-U-T-F-I-N?
S-U-T-P-H-I-N, I believe.
P-H-I, okay.
Sutton, yeah.
They don't always work, so.
I believe that's it.
So the new, new one, whenever we purchase it, would be at Fire Station One, where would the existing one be located, the reserved one?
Another good question, we would have to find room for it. We're running out of room, so hopefully we have Station 10 by then.
So, since Fire Station Three services, I guess, the tallest buildings in town, there isn't one there currently, or is, and is it not big enough to fit one?
We could fit one in there. I proposed one in this current budget, a ladder three with personnel. We knew that was probably a long shot, but when we're talking about the SEC expansion, and a lot of the expansion I'm hearing about, going down Jenkins all the way to Lloyd Noble, you've got multi-story, commercial, residential, things that they're proposing, it's something we've got to start looking at. We looked at putting the ladder that we have at Station Two at Station Three. Operationally, there were some challenges with that, but from an ISO perspective also, they look at where that ladder is located based on your tallest buildings. And having it at Station Two, we, we got in the coverage area of what the challenges are on the campus area, the, the large structures there, and you got the Embassy Suites, and you could kind of touch on the hospital west, so two made the most sense. One, to have a second one also makes sense, but certainly at some point in the future, we need to look at one at Three also.
Okay, so we just approved a six-story apartment, 600 bedroom, 600, yeah, 600 bedrooms, unit where OU Motel is, right around the corner from Station Three.
So you want as tall as you can, because you can't get as, you can't get close, so many times a six-story is going to be about the highest operational reach you can get with a 100-foot coming up to it. You may have to park a long ways away, or there's challenges.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, you bet.
I got something for the chief, too.
Yeah.
It is true that for every new vehicle you get, we're supposed to turn one in, right? According to fleet?
Historically, yes, but we made, this, this request was different, it said, we requested a new apparatus.
Okay, so we might have to, okay.
That, now, we will not be turning anything in.
Okay, perfect, because our current table of equipment, that's based on a Norman from 10 years ago, right? Approximately?
Well, certainly, we reevaluate that. We, we, you know, we always want to have something to put in service when something goes out of service.
Absolutely.
So, and in the times we're in, you know, where you've got longer, you know, I think things are getting better, a little bit better supply chain-wise, but there's been times where, you know, we've had a lot of things in the shop waiting on parts that weren't coming in.
Absolutely.
And that's no knock on fleet, they were doing the best they could, the parts weren't here. Thanks for the question.
Any other questions?
Actually, one more. On the deappropriations, who determined that the parks and the trail system was the best place to take this money from, and why?
We didn't have a whole lot of options, but the, the parks engineer over there, they determined these were the only options we had to cut back temporarily.
And so they're temporary?
Right.
They're going to be put back into the program here in a year or so.
Okay, perfect. All right.
Yes, sir.
If we have any list of capital projects and awards that we would like to potentially fund with General Fund surplus, program it into the budget, I mean, when should we get those in?
Sooner the better. We'll be able to evaluate them, show you what the impacts are to the bottom line, and then bring them to you for your consideration as we proceed towards adoption.
The next meeting that'll discuss the amendments would be the, the, what month are we in? May? The May Team Finance Committee meeting will be discussing amendments at that meeting.
Okay.
You're doing good, Ken. She can see light at the end of the tunnel.
Hopefully, hopefully it's not a train.
All right, if there's nothing more from council, we're done. Thank you all.
Thank you.